Patient is available.
Thank you. Any other comments? Annie and Lanny.
I have a quick question. I was looking over the, I think it's Attachment 1. Can you, so the listed time, is that the time that it arrives at the school and the time that it leaves the school, those two times?
In most instances, they reflect actual bell times.
Oh, okay. So what is kind of like the average time our students are on the bus? Do we have an average time or do we have a limit?
Well, it's a very good question. Actually, our board policy permits up to one hour. We try to schedule the runs in such a way that they're minimal time on the bus. I would say that on average, most of our runs will average in the neighborhood of 20 to 30 minutes. But we will have some that will be more depending on where they're located in the city. But board policy does permit us up to one hour.
And then a follow-up question. So if it, like I noticed on Clinton it has, which had the earliest arrival time at 7:40, am I reason for that?
Actually, that's a carryover and one that we probably didn't catch. But what, we do have some breakfast programs at some schools. So we do, we do have students arriving, you know, earlier than what you might anticipate, maybe to engage in a breakfast program before school would actually start. We also have some runs where we link together, where we might have special education, where we take a group in and then turn around and take a sp- early childhood group into the school. So there might be connecting bells, or we refer to them in the Transportation Department as checkpoints. And so as I'm looking at that, it probably was either a holdover from a breakfast or maybe a checkpoint that we had inserted in. And this is a working draft still that we're still developing, so those times may be tweaked a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Lanny?
Bill, I wanted to add my thanks to my colleagues and those of others for your service, and particularly also for adding the focus program busing this year. I think there's going to be a lot of families that'll be very excited about that opportunity. For those that don't know, currently, the families all get together at the beginning of the year to picnic or event and then gather up around their home schools and groups and figure out how they're going to get their students to school. And for some families, it's, it's not a workable option. So I think this will really help emphasize options for our focus programs. My first question would be, how are we going to let students know about that for those that don't tune in and watch every single board meeting?
Well, I think obviously, as we continue with the process, we'll work specifically with all the high school principals and, and the focus program folks together to work on the best way to get that information out to students. I think we'll probably have to rely a lot upon the various schools to help us with that process. We're working to finalize the pickup and drop-off times. And once we get those finalized, we'll work with the schools to publish those, much like we did with the Career Academy. And we'll get those times out there and get them published, so everybody will know what they are.
And thank you. And yeah, you just mentioned the Career Academy and the busing and the routes that we've sort of practiced this year and used for Career Academy are going to be similar to what we used for the focus programs. What have we learned this year from our Career Academy routes and specifically the use of First Student for those routes?
Well, first of all, I would say that the routing has went very smoothly. And speaking with Mr. Hoence, he's been very pleased, I think, with the overall process. I think early on, when we set up the routes for the Career Academy, we set them up with the thought in mind that we would have two buses for each. We have three different routes. We have a northern corridor, a central corridor, and a southern corridor. And each corridor is served with two buses. And going into it, we had it set up essentially where each, the both buses would travel to each school, kind of in tandem. And we thought that was going to be necessary primarily based on numbers. But as time went by, we found out that timing issues kind of come into play as well. And so what we ended up doing is we dedicated one bus to each of, or maybe one bus would do one school or two schools as opposed to going to all of the schools. And that helped with our timing issues because of, you know, either rush hour traffic or just logistics. It appeared in the long run that that made better sense. And that's kind of what we've been doing for the majority of this year. So I think if we've learned anything, it was just some of those logistical issues, you know, kind of moving forward. And that, that's helped us immensely.
Are there any plans to change anything in the routes for the Career Academy for next fall to what we're doing now?
I think we're going to pretty much leave them intact with the way that we currently have them structured. We have some other advantages with those Career Academy routes where we're finding some options to be able to link those with some of our other schools. For example, the human relocation, they were, they'll work very nicely with kind of connecting the dots in the afternoon there. And that's always great for us because we're all about double, triple tiering bus routes to maximize efficiencies and use of equipment. So I think for next year, I think we'll, we're proposing to pretty much leave them intact.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Don?
Well, first, I just wanted to point out, Annie has been a champion of getting these routes added since last year, when we were going through last year's budget process. And so, good job on helping get this marshaled through. And one of the questions that Annie asked earlier as part of our finance one-on-one was the same thing. How do we get the word out? Because it's, it's less valuable to offer the transportation if students don't know it's available. And one of the things that Liz had suggested was, yes, we'd be working through schools, but also with perhaps a focus on the counselors and making sure that they are making students aware that this is an option for them, in time for them to be able to make plans hopefully for next year. The other thing that I wanted to say is, I apologize to my colleagues for taking business meeting time to say me too. But I just had to take a minute, Bill, and say thank you so much for your work over the years. I mean, I can't, I think, it's, transportation is such a complicated thing with so many moving parts. And you've been such a combination of competence and professionalism, getting kids safely to and from school, putting parents' minds at ease. I know we've had a couple of times when transportation was kind of in the news a little bit, and I had parents who were concerned. And I felt completely comfortable just forwarding them to you. And you took care of their concerns, and the feedback that I got back was incredible. And honestly, I just, I think you're going to be an incredibly hard act to follow. Thank you so much for your work.
Thanks.
Just making sure everybody else has done before I end this with my thank you. I always watched high school principals as they were putting their schedules together, their APs for the year, and thinking, how do they do that in seven periods? Well, that's seven hours. You get them all where they have to be in about an hour.
Yeah.
And it's all over the city. It's an incredible job. Finding bus drivers isn't just new to Lincoln. I know I drove back from Oklahoma this weekend, and there were signs up all down in the area they can't find bus drivers. I would say to the community out there, anybody needs a job for a bus driver, there's probably any community in the country, you could probably go find a job. But I'm glad that we only picked the best professionals who like kids, who run a well-run bus. And the kids most generally like their drivers. That's a credit to the staff, that's a credit to your leadership. I also want to wish you good luck in your future endeavors. No one deserves it more than you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
We can give him a hand. Okay, moving on to the agenda, we have Policy 5520 on student fees with which we had the student, the public hearing tonight. Barbara, you're Chair of the Policy Committee?
Yes, I am. And we reviewed this, and I will turn it over to John Neal for any details and explanation.
Thank you. The policy is reviewed annually, which is required by law, including the hearing. There are no recommended changes to the policy itself. If you turn to the appendix, I'll walk you through some of the changes to the fees for students. And the appendix follows the policy about five pages in. The first you'll notice, it just says musical instruments. And the clarification there is that it's bolded, so it's covered under the Fee Waiver Program, meaning a student qualified for free or reduced lunch can have the fee waived for using a district musical instrument in the schools. So it's just a clarification that is part of the Fee Waiver process. There's been no change in the fee. You turn the page, there's the same clarification. The first one was at the elementary level, and this is the fee at the secondary level for both middle and high school. So just a clarification. On the third page, about halfway down, you'll see optional as the word that's added. Again, there's not a change in the fee. There was question on whether the lock fee was optional or required. The use of the lockers and the, and the lock is an optional fee for the high schools. Down below that, there was a clarification of spectator fees, that for athletic events. There was just a change in the language so that it mirrored the same language for spectator fees for activities. So that's more of a parallel construction than it is a change in the policy, but so the fee amount stays the same. But for spectator fees, we did change the location to put it next to the athletic fees and put a limit on those. $10 per player activity, 15 for all-day competition or festival. We clarified that because we just, we didn't have anything noted at this point and wanted to make that clear. You'll see that those number, that amount is higher than the athletic cost. The reason it's higher, because, for instance, you might have 18 basketball games in a season, but one play. So when you look at the cost per season for both events, they're much more comparable between the two. So it's just the number of events that dictates the different amounts. If you change the page, there's just a, flip the page, there's just a change. Flag Corps is now Color Guard. And you'll see that in both the left-hand and right-hand column. Same activity, just a new, new appropriate description. The page that follows, there is a change in equipment and attire for vocal music groups. It changed from $300 to $500. The way those fees are determined is speaking with each of the directors from the programs across the different high schools and looking for what are real and reasonable fees to expect from students. Those are covered, you can see that's in bold, so it is covered by the Fee Waiver policy. Down a little lower is audition fees for all-state music groups. The change from 25 to 30 reflects a change in the state requirement for those fees. So their fees went up, and so our fee does as well. Down below is again a reflection of the locker fees, making sure those are identified as optional. Flipping to the next page, there was a change in trips. These are non-routine trips. These are covered by fee waivers. And just the cost of trips over time has gone up. And so that amount has changed from $3,000 to $3,500. And that covers all the recommended changes to fees. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. Or Dr. Stavum.
Questions? I have one on junior ROTC, because I got asked it and I honestly didn't know the answer. Are there fees associated with junior ROTC?
I'm going to turn the page back and look.
I was trying to remember when we put it in place, if that was provided by the Air Force, and I honestly cannot remember the answer. I didn't see it, and so I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss it.
I, I don't live in student fees, and I think it is paid for by them. I don't typically see any fees that come through from those students. So it's either included with that affiliation, or we've covered it in a school budget item. But I can check on that.
I had a younger parent ask, because her kids were looking at it for when they went to high school. So, thank you for checking on that. Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to Item 10.2.1, the Title VII Indian Education Program. That would be Dr. Stavum and Dr. Hicks.
Thank you. And Dr. Hicks, I'll ask to come up while I introduce this. This is a grant that we have had in place. This is actually year three of that grant, but there's a yearly application that has to happen in order to continue accessing that over subsequent years. Just as a reminder, this is a grant that is in place largely to support our Native American and Alaskan Native students for things that support them in their academics, as well as some things that support their vision beyond high school. And we have a report coming to the Board. It was scheduled for April, we needed to move it to May, that will give you kind of a report around this, and we'll address some of the questions that came from Ms. Byer and some surrounding information that I think is good to know. But I also asked Linda to just give us a couple of the nuances, because in looking at this on the board agenda, this grant is just a little bit unique in terms of how that money is allocated. And so I wanted to share that with you, just as kind of some highlights, but we'll have further information at the board report to the SLC Committee in May. So Linda, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. Good evening. The goals of the grant include culturally responsive academic support, student advocacy and leadership, and culturally sensitive college prep. And something that's really helpful to our students and family is that ability to provide cultural supports. Many of our other grants focus more, are more focused on the academic types of supports. And there's really a need and a great support in this grant for, for more of the cultural supports. The grant funds are mainly used to help us to employ two Native American advocates, and they are Chris Ross and Valerie Kilscro Copeland. And they, they're uniquely positioned to really build positive relationships with, and trust with students and families. Some of whom have had, have maybe not had a history of positive experiences in school settings, or who may have experienced generational trauma. That trust is really an important factor to, to success in schools. They also help our non-Native staff to build understanding and connections with our Native American students and families. They hold family events, back-to-school, spring recognition of graduates. They're planning a fall cultural sharing that will be a new event that, that our families are very excited about. And they regularly check student attendance and grades and have that personal connection with students when they need that, whether they're struggling or just if they're doing very well, pushing them to the next step academically. Parent involvement is required for all of our Title I funds, but the expectations are even higher for parent involvement with this grant. We have a Native American Advisory Committee. They meet monthly, and they're very closely involved in what goes, how we use this grant, you know, what we apply for, what our goals are. They sign the, the grant application. The members of this advisory group, parents and grandparents of our Native American students, sign the application, and that's a requirement. And so when they met in April, we shared, gave them an update of some trends in student achievement and attendance and graduation. And then we asked them for feedback about, you know, what should the focus of this grant be? What should we use the budget for? They gave us our feedback. We'll go back to them at the May meeting with, with our, with the ideas that they have suggested, and then that they'll be part of our application. So that's, that's really unique to this grant. And as Dr. Stavum said, we will give a full report at the May Student Learning Committee.
Questions?
Questions?
Barbara?
Will that report also be presented to the Board then?
It would come out in the minutes from the Student Learning Committee unless you wanted to talk with the Chair of that committee and have something presented then to the full Board, which would be an option you could do.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Sounds good. Any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hicks. This grant will come back in two weeks. Actually, the first meeting in May. It's May 10. Moving on, we have Item Second Reading, Recommended for Action from Board Committees. It would be the Policy Committee. We have one, two, three, five policies.
Ah. And I'd like to go and move approval of 11.1.1, 11.1.2, and 11.1.3, 11.1.4, 11.1.5. And we are done. These are policies that-
Could we wait for a second, please?
Yes, sure.
Don?
I approve of the notion of doing these all as a group, and I would offer a second.
Okay, thank you.
No.
These are all policies that we reviewed as a group, as a Policy Committee, of which Matt Schulte serves on, and Don Mahew and myself. And I will turn it over to John in case there are any questions. We did discuss this at the last board meeting.
And I'll be happy to answer any questions here.
Questions? Comments? Don?
I have a couple of comments. It's too bad that Mr. Todd left, because I wanted to speak to a couple of his points on the controversial issues policy. First, I believe that in his comments, Mr. Todd was suggesting a lack of communication or response from Board members or from the committee. And I just wanted to point out, it's been a while since he and I have had a conversation, but I remember back in the day, spending quite a bit of time on the phone with Mr. Todd. Mr. Todd joined us at one of our Policy Committee meetings, which is something that is not done very often. And I don't, I don't think that there's been a lack of interest or effort from Board members. But speaking just for myself, where, you know, I'm very grateful for the feedback and the outreach and the communication, I just disagree with, with his point of view on this particular policy. One of the questions that he asked is, are we representing the parents or LPS? And I would say, yes. We, we represent parents, children, staff, the best interests of the district, taxpayers, the community. And so much of the time, our work is finding that, you know, balancing act between, for very difficult issues, which I know that this is, this is one of those. In going through his point-by-point analysis of the, of the policy, and I don't want to put words in Mr. Todd's mouth, but what it seems to me that he's looking for is stronger language that would, could be more punitive of teachers and administration. And from my perspective, I think that misses the point. The point of the policy, if we pass it as presented, is to express the will of the Board, which is that teachers should provide reasonable advance notice in anticipation of planned controversial items, or if something were to come up organically in class, then to also provide notification afterwards. I think that it's, it is trying to do exactly what I have perceived that, that he has asked for, which is to make sure that parents are in the driver's seat and they have control of the education of their children, but also providing clear directives to staff. The other thing that I would mention, and again, I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth, but Matt Schulte was, kind of took the driver's seat on making these changes to the policy. I know he spent a fair amount of time outside of Policy Committee meetings, working with staff to come up with language that was in service of those issues. And I think that Matt did a great job of doing that. And so, from my perspective, I think that there has been positive communication. I don't agree with everything that Mr. Todd has suggested, but I do think that in the interest of serving, you know, parental notification and parental control over the education that their children receive, I think that this policy does a very good job of that, and I intend to support it.
Thank you, Don. Barbara?
I just want to add to Don's comments that I too, as Chair of the Policy Committee, have spoken with Lee Todd and found that we had a good conversation. It's just that we need to agree to disagree on this particular issue. And I agree with Don's assessment of the process.
Any other questions? Lanny?
Not a question, but a comment. I agree with everything that Don and Barb just said, and just also wanted to add that one of the concerns Mr. Todd presented was that this somehow weakens the policy. And I just, I looked through the changes specifically. I don't see anything that weakens the policy. In fact, I see largely what are clarifications, that the intent of the policy is that it emphasizes our, our mission to develop critical thinking skills in our students, which is extremely important. And then also, it adds acknowledgement of a whole entire area of controversial topics, which are those that arise within the classroom without planning. And so if anything, this clarification strengthens the policy and confirms that parents are in the driver's seat. And then just finally, his, his concern that it somehow removes administrators from the equation, administrators didn't appear in the original language. It talked about the district as a whole and specifically teachers. So by clarifying that it's teachers, I think this actually removes an out to say, well, it's just somebody in the district generically. Again, clarification's strengthening. I look forward to voting yes and supporting the changes.
Thank you, Lanny. I just want a clarification, because it's been muddled through the conversation, not from the Board up here, but comments of it. A parent has the right to have their child removed from any curricular activity, correct? With an alternate learning?
And I'm going to turn that over to Dr. Stavum to talk about that process.
That is correct.
And if a parent wanted to do that, how would they do that?
Typically, they would contact their child's teacher or the principal and ask some questions. Sometimes when that process happens, they then will even change their mind, and they just need more information. If they get that information and then determine there, it's, it's something that they want to remove their child from typically, that's a lesson or two. If it goes beyond that, it's a little bit different issue. If it would be an entire course or something that, that's viewed differently than, than the intent of a topic that might be in isolation during a day or two. And we've worked with that many, many times. That is an uncommon type of a request. But then, an alternative activity is found for that child, might be a project related to the topic that they're still on, but absent of the controversial piece. Often, it comes maybe from a piece of literature that they object to, so we find an alternative piece of literature. But we always work with the parent to come to an agreeable compromise that we feel like the child can continue learning and achieve the objectives of that lesson while not compromising a parent's preference.
So ultimately, parents are in control of their child?
Very much so. And we appreciate that. And, you know, it, it causes us to review things and to really look objectively at things and to work in partners with parents, and that's what we are all about.
Kind of goes in hand-in-hand with the policy that we're also adopting on parental involvement. We'd like them to be really involved.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Annie?
I just think it should be noted that one person's controversy is another person's life. And if we are, what really our goal is to have graduates who are ready to move out into life and be active citizens. We have to allow a space for controversy to happen in our classrooms. And then I believe this policy really allows that space to happen with a professional judgment of our teachers, as well as an active involvement of a parent. And I, I, I've been going back and forth and looking at it, and I, I see nothing that would preclude me as a parent from saying, this is not where we're going to go with this language. And nothing precludes me from saying, you know, one person's controversy is another person's life, and I, you know, we need to have a citizenry that can handle that kind of discussion. So on that, that's my comment there. I do have a question about another policy, though.
Please ask.
Okay. Policy 5119. We, did, I just want to ask, did we get a clarification on this? When we met on Monday, we were, had some questions about the intent of 5119 and the language of the, it's number, point number two, that an option student may be permitted to attend a building or grade that the district categorizes as closed transfers sibling is attending that same attendance center for that requested school year. I think the question came up, did you, did you get that clear?
Yeah, I'd be happy to address that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so basically, the situation that we're talking about is when you have two children in the family, one is a current eighth grader, one is a current fifth grader, and the family has put a request in for the fifth grader to attend the same middle school that the eighth grader is currently attending but won't be attending that next year.
So you just answered the question.
So if, so that's the scenario.
Gotcha.
For option students, that is not an automatic approval under the policy. And the, the changes in front of us don't change that tonight. So that, that policy, that aspect of the policy stays fixed. For students that live in district that aren't option students, that is an option for them. So if that same fifth grade, eighth grade scenario occurred, that's something that would be approved under policy. And that's, that's my understanding, and I'm going to let John correct me if I got that wrong.
You have that correct.
Okay. And does that answer your question, Annie?
So it's not a given. So if the eighth grader's moving out and the fifth grader's moving in, it's a brand-new question for that fifth grader moving in.
For option students, yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. Yes, it is.
And you guys have all discussed the difference between an option student and an LPS student, which might be easier to say, one who lives in LPS's district and one who lives outside of LPS's district. That might be an easier understanding for the community at large.
That's correct.
Thanks. Thank you. Any other questions? If not, are you ready for the vote? Laura, would you call the role, the role on all five policies, please?
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Mahew?
Yes.
Ms. Mungar?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Moving on, we have the Education Quest Foundation College Access Grant for Northeast High. Connie?
I guess I'd like to make a motion that, that we pass this.
I just want to see if you're awake.
Yeah, what?
Lanny?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the College Access Grant for Northeast High Discussion. We did discuss this two weeks ago. Seeing none, Laura, would you please call the role?
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Mahew?
Yes.
Ms. Mungar?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
We have no expedited or emergency actions. We do have one item removed from the consent agenda, was removed by Mr. Mahew on the Professional Learning Management System. It's bid number 8582. Don?
In order to facilitate conversation, I'd like to move approval.
Lanny?
Second.
And then I'd like to introduce it.
Please.
This was something that we discussed at our tech, last Tech Committee Meeting on which I serve with Barb and Annie. And this is continuing our trend of an overabundance of transparency. This is something that is very appropriate to come to us as part of consent agenda, but it was something that I kind of wanted to hang a lantern on and make sure that Board Members knew what we were doing and why. And so I've asked staff to speak briefly on this particular item. And so with that, I'd like to turn it over to Jane.
This is, I don't use the word very often, but this is kind of a game changer for us. This is a systems tool that is very necessary. We talked about this both in Student Learning Committee and Technology Committee and literally kind of brings us into the 21st century because we've been using this since 1999, our current system. We offer professional development all of the time in our district. Today, I was at an early childhood event. You can walk by the boardroom here and see an event happening almost every day or downstairs in one of our training rooms or out in our buildings. But our capacity in terms of how we organize those professional development offerings, we, we've really outgrown our system. And we've outgrown it in a couple of ways. One of the ways we've outgrown it is just in terms of the system being antiquated and involving a lot of staff time for manual kinds of tasks like taking things from one list that's generated in the system and then having to manually enter it into our system that tracks things for payment and attendance and those kinds of things. The other way that we've outgrown it is just in how our teachers want to learn and need to learn, which is seeing things that they are both interested in and that are required of them. So our new teachers that come in have requirements as new teachers for professional development that we ask them to complete. Our existing staff members have requirements on a yearly basis for staff development, but there's also a measure of choice that we want to be able to offer, things that people are interested in. This year, a group of teachers said, we want to learn about some things just because we're really interested. We need a better way to house those kinds of offerings for special interests, for new things with our technology initiative, for new things around learning about our students, learning how students learn, and, and anything that, that we are interested in doing. But in order to do those things, we need to have a better system to do that. And so True North Logic is a system that we have chosen because in looking at what's kind of available in, in that type of a provider, it really met all of our needs from how we are able to make things visible to our staff members in terms of going in and choosing in a way that's very user-friendly. Right now, if you don't know what something's necessarily called, it might be very difficult to find it. So searchability, it has the capacity to have videos loaded onto it, so if we present something in one location, we can capture that and offer it to the masses. As we've talked about, it's getting more and more difficult for us to house groups of people that need a particular training in one location just due to the number of people. So it allows us to do that. It also can, can have an add-on at a later time if we so choose to with our whole evaluation system. So if we want people to be looking at something specific to be a skill builder, we can connect some of those things together. So that's a good future option that we might consider. So it, it's an efficiency factor, it's an effectiveness factor, and it's really meeting our, our certified and classified staff members where they are in terms of what they need to learn and what they want to learn and I think is a great step forward for those things.
Questions? Don?
Just as a quick observation, I would offer that when people are asking us to be more efficient, more effective with taxpayer dollars, this is an example of doing that, where we are leveraging software and technology to save people hours and then those people can be using that time for, you know, better uses in the, in the classroom or whatever else. So this is something that I was very interested and excited to hear about and I will be voting in favor of this.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, Laura, would you please call the role?
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Mahu?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgar?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danik?
Yes, motion carries.
Moving on, we move down to informational items from Board Committees. Is there any report from Board Committees tonight? All right. From the Career Academy?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Danik. Tonight is Senior Recognition Night at the Career Academy as we celebrate the very first class of seniors to graduate. You do have invitations and I think Connie and I are going to rush out there after the meeting tonight to, to catch that. I also wanted to acknowledge that we had three students in the Health Occupations Student Association, or HOSA, that qualified for the national competition. So that's pretty exciting. Enrollment numbers are shaping up for fall. We had a surge in applications last month, so we're now over 400 applications. And a lot of that is due to great attendance and information sessions. And I also wanted to give a shout-out to Brent Tolson in Lincoln Southeast who had 85 applicants. Most of those will be juniors next year, so that's a nice block of students for the Career Academy. Next year's class, right now, looks like it'll have about 370 students. We'll have 120 current juniors that will return as seniors and 250 new applicants that are confirmed, and that's a mix of juniors and seniors. Well, they are still taking applications. And just for comparison, our current enrollment is 275 students. Other items that I wanted to report on, Bev Harvey and Scott Wieskamp, Bev of SCC are fine-tuning the RFP for the enterprise space that we've talked about. So soon that space should be serving up both coffee and learning opportunities for our students. Also, staff are working on fine-tuning the budget numbers for 2016-17 using what we've learned from this year's experiences to fine-tune the budget. One item I did want to note is that our transportation costs for this year are higher than what we anticipated by about $250,000. The reasoning behind that isn't that we added more routes or, or anything related to what Bill talked about earlier, but it's just the fact that we used student-first for those routes rather than LPS busing and the cost of that contracting is higher. So that would be reflected in other parts of the, of the LPS budget, but it's something that we'll look at going forward. Also, and finally, I just wanted to do a thank you to all of our TCA community partners. SCC noted at our last meeting that per the joint venture agreement, they're offsetting half of the tuition, total tuition was $290,000. So that's a great savings to our students and families. We currently have over 220 individuals representing over 130 businesses, 50 to 60 mentors that showed up the last week of March for Mentor Connection Week. Wendy Van of the Foundation reported that we continue to add new partners, including Cabela's, Kidwell, and we have renewals coming in already from our multi-year partners like the Lincoln Chamber and Bison. We're actually out of space on the Founder's Wall at the Career Academy. So the support of the community's been overwhelming, it's deeply appreciated, and our next meeting is on May 11th. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Boswell.
Mr. Boswell, will there be coffee at your next meeting? Good coffee from the enterprise?
Well, we're still working on the RFP, so the next meeting probably won't have coffee, but it'll be coming soon.
Dr. Joel?
My, my report will be brief. This is obviously that time of year where things are frenzied and a little bit harried and lots of meetings and lots of celebrations. Forthcoming is a celebration of retirements and many of our Board Members will be able to participate in. And, you know, that, that soon gets replaced by all the new hires that come in the district too, over the, that Dr. Weber and his team have been bringing, bringing on board and through the summer. Hannah Houston, I was reminded a couple of times today that there's an event tonight and how proud our community and our schools and her students and her colleagues are of, of what she represents and we just want to wish her the, the very, very best of luck going forward and, you know, it's placed, she's placed Lincoln on the, on the national map. And, and then finally, just a, a word on the ACT. That's picked up quite a bit of, of news the last couple of weeks, particularly coming out of, off the legislative session. We, we really did a good thing when we piloted the ACT for all of our juniors and, you know, the reports that have arisen from student testimonials, parent testimonials, but even more importantly, the number of students that have done far better on an ACT than they would have, and in many cases, students probably wouldn't have taken the test, and been able to leverage that into financial aid to at least attempt the next area, was a really good decision by our Board and our community in being one of those six or seven pilot sites. But now that it's going to be something that, you know, we're going to be moving forward to in the state, we look forward to just continued great results. And then?
Thank you, Dr. Joel. Moving on, we have the monthly financial report. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none. Announcements of upcoming events, but before we do that, at your place, you'll each find a copy of the book, Five Habits of High-Impact School Boards. When Dr. Stavum and I were in Boston, as most of you were, this is something we talked about sharing with each of you. I know that Connie and I attended a class on orientations from school board, for new school board members, and it was a pretty impressive class. It's a good book, should be fairly easy reading, and I thought you all might enjoy it with all your Board Service. Thank you. For the next announcement, May 4th is the Chamber Coffee at the Chamber Office. It's at 8:00 AM. At 5:00 PM is the LPS Retirement Celebration at the Lincoln Country Club. On May 10th is our next Board Meeting. Connie?
I do have something to add. On May 3rd, the Liba Educational Committee will be meeting at Lincoln High at the Back Laureate Program. So we have decided to meet at schools every month. Last month, we worked at the, we met at the Career Academy. This month, we'll be Back Laureate Program and this summer, we'll be at the Summer School at North Star. So, any of you that'd like to join me, please feel free.
Thanks, Connie. And now's the time for that second bite of the apple of public comment. For those who did not address the Board earlier, if you'd like to, please come forward. You all have five minutes. Seeing none, we have no request for a closed session. And with that, I will adjourn this meeting.